...effort to address those concerns and it came back, well, thanks for addressing those, but no anyway. And it's a little bit daunting to try to spend the time and effort and even the resources to try to find a solution that's going to be acceptable to the commission just to have them say, "Well, no." I kind of equate it to when I'm at home and my daughter says, "Can I have some, you know, can I have a popsicle for dinner?" I say, "No." And the answer is, "Because I said so." And so, you know, it almost feels like, "Well, the answer here is no because I said so." And so, I'm wondering if you have any sort of, you know, is there any other reason as to why you're not recommending this, particularly because all of the concerns were addressed?
I think the commission was really concerned about the size of these devices.
So that wasn't addressed in the amendments?
No. The original legislation has a certain height, 58 feet maximum, that these UEDs could reach. They had concerns about brightness. A major concern, which is addressed in the amendments, concerned encroachments over city rights of way. For example, the commission did not want any of these devices in the public sidewalk. They had to be on private property. They also had concerns about--
Can I just interrupt?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, though. That's addressed in the amendment.
It is.
Okay.
So, but I guess what I'm asking is, what was not addressed that was the cause for the--
I think the commission just felt uncomfortable with the size and proposed locations and certainly they were concerned about the brightness and the other impacts on the public realm, the public environment as experienced by pedestrians, drivers, cyclists, that this would be distracting and inappropriate for the urban fabric of Philadelphia.
Okay. Because from what I see, most of that's been addressed. So, I still don't see, understand what, you know, why the commission is saying no. And I just think that if we're, you know, like, we're the fifth largest city in the nation and as, you know, as being such, we have to have a reason, I believe, for the no. I'm not saying that, you know, no should be off the table, but I would like to have the reason for the no instead of no and just because I said so, which is what it kind of feels that the answer is that we're giving here.
The reason, I guess, if I could just summarize it, would be that it would have a negative, speaking on behalf of the commission, that the UEDs would have a negative impact on the public realm in Philadelphia.
Okay. Based on--
Well, size.
Okay.
You know, height, brightness, immensity of these devices. They were just very uncomfortable with the concept.
Okay. They were uncomfortable with the concept?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before I recognize Councilman Good, one other question came to me. How many of, do you know, maybe you don't know, how many of the commission members, I know we're going to see a demonstration of these, how many commission members actually saw it, saw the demonstration?
All of the commission members had seen the demonstration at the January 20th meeting, which was held as an information-only item on the agenda, basically a briefing of the commission members of the concept. So, they all had seen it.
Okay.
They had a month, a month-plus to reflect on the idea.
All right. I would, again, just have to echo Councilwoman Bass's concerns, though. I mean, if all these things were raised at a meeting and the vast majority of them were addressed, to then just say, "Well, we never liked it anyway," sounds a little not the way to operate.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it doesn't happen very often. I mean, most times, the commission will vote in accord with the staff's recommendation. In this case, I just think that the level of comfort was not high enough for them even to approve this amendment to the zoning code, which would establish an overlay.
Okay. And I know you can't speak for everybody. I understand. I'm sorry. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, your statement is that the commission does not like the concept?
Yes.
But this particular bill just establishes an overlay district and the commission would still have to approve individual displays. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, when you raise issues with regard to size, scale, those type of things, those are things the commission actually would have to look at in terms of a plan of development.
Correct. And in fact, working with Councilman Squilla, we had also suggested an amendment, or as part of one of the amendments, that review by the City Planning Commission Civic Design Review Committee would also occur. And that, the CDR Committee, is a committee of the City Planning Commission that was created by the new zoning code that evaluates the physical design of a project, usually they're larger-sized projects, for its impact on the public realm. So, there would be several-step additional process of review for each individual UED that might be applied for.
I think you see where I'm going with this. To echo what my colleagues are saying, the City Planning Commission would still have to review and give approval to individual displays. And so, why be against the concept when you still have a say in terms of scale and density and character and how it impacts around the community? If you still have the authority to review and approve, how can you just be against it?
I understand what you're saying, and that in part was part of the staff's reasoning in working to craft these amendments to make the bill more acceptable to the commission. We knew that this just creates an entitlement where such UEDs could be installed, but for any individual UED to actually be implemented would require another series of reviews.
And so, you still get to be against the displays if you want to, but why be against the concept?
Well, you know, again, I can only voice what the commission expressed at the meeting of February 17th, and they expressed a lot of discomfort with the idea.
Without even looking at any individual displays?
Well, they had seen three conceptual examples that had been presented to them on January 20th.
And so, did they have any recommendations in terms of those three examples?
Well, I mean, they didn't specifically address the examples at that meeting, but they did raise concerns, as I mentioned, about height, size, brightness, and impact on the public realm.
Did they have recommendations with regard to height and size and brightness and--
They didn't have specific recommendations, but the staff used the guidance of that discussion at the January 20th meeting to work with Councilman Squilla's office to develop some additional amendments. One example is that these devices shouldn't be installed on, say, a surface parking lot, where that surface parking lot would never be developed because a UED was providing some income to the owner of that property. That was one amendment that we added to the bill. You know, I can only say how the commission voted and kind of tried, attempt my best to interpret their reasoning, which I've stated--
Just one final question. So, is it fair to say that the commission does not want to be responsible for having to make decisions on individual displays?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat?
Is it fair to say the commission does not want to be responsible for having to make decisions on individual displays?
Well, I don't know that they--
So, if you're just against the concept, if you're against the overlay district, then you don't have to make a decision on individual displays?
They were against the concept and they were against the idea of the overlay that would permit them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If I could just add, it seems like they ignored a whole lot of work done by the councilman's office and the staff of the planning commission. It doesn't make sense to me. I just got to echo what everybody else is saying. And I know that's not your fault, but I'm just got to put that on the record. Anyone else? Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Javell, I got a question on licensing and permitting and the ability for upgrades and maintenance for the structure itself. Can you explain to me what the permitting fees, the license fees, and the zoning process will be as we move forward?
I can't explain the permitting fees, but the legislation does say that no permits may be issued for a UED device until it's subsequently, each individual UED is approved by City Planning and the Art Commission, and with the additional amendment added for PennDOT, for PennDOT's approval of these devices as well. I don't know just offhand what the requirement would be for the permitting fee or, and the maintenance, or, not the maintenance, but the enforcement, for example, of the brightness, you know, would have to be developed through regulations on the part of LNI.
Is there, or has there been license fees set, or does that still need to be set right now?
Not a specific, I am not aware of a specific license fee that has been established for UEDs.
Is there anybody in front of the administration present here today that has an answer, or if you can get back to the committee with--
We could certainly get back to you.
Some of the answers to his questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Tasci?
I just have a question. Given the tone of your testimony describing the thinking of the planning commission, even if we pass this bill, do you ever see any of these signs going up with their permission?
I think it would really depend upon the quality of the design and the impact of, you know, on the surrounding area for the commission and the Art Commission, for that matter, to approve these. But, you know, the commission has an open mind, and I think that they would evaluate any application for a UED installation in good faith, you know, if this overlay ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jaster or Ms. Cupp? Seeing none. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Marconi, our next group?
Thaddeus Barkowski, Carl Primavera, Ronald Patterson.
Thank you. Good morning.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good morning. Ronald Patterson, I'm with Claire Harrison--
A little closer, micro components.
Good morning. Ronald Patterson with Claire Harrison Law Firm. My partner, Carl Primavera, will join us shortly as at the zoning board. With me is Thaddeus Barkowski, who is the Principal at Catalyst Outdoor. Thaddeus has a short presentation for the committee, which I think is important because this is a novel idea, and everyone has their ideas of how it may look. It's complicated and complex, but I think the short video and slide presentation you will see will make things a lot clearer. So, if you want to add--
Okay. Thank you.
Two things for--
Just identify yourself.
Thaddeus Barkowski, Catalyst Outdoor Advertising. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. If I could just address Councilman Heenan's inquiry earlier as to permit fee. The legislation as presently contemplated has an annual permit fee, Councilman Heenan, of $4,000 per year with escalators in that permit fee. There's also a requirement for a developer to have a place in escrow, an amount sufficient to remove any UED in the event of abandonment. Those are two things I believe you had asked earlier. When I was looking at the three years of history that went into the extensive planning of this, and Renee, if you could please, on the video, I wanted to take a lengthy process, an extensive process, and boil it down as simply as I could as to what this is about. And it reminded me when I was a child and I lived in the Fairmount section of the city. My father worked for the City of Philadelphia in the Solicitors' Office, and I had an opportunity on rare occasions when I was off from school to meet him in the city for lunch or for otherwise. And as a child, I didn't know much about the city or the built environment, but I could tell you exactly where the John Wanamaker Eagle was, and I could tell you exactly how to get there, because it was uniquely Philadelphia, and it reinforced the sense of place that is Philadelphia. So, here we are, about three decades later, and the opportunity exists in 2015 to take what's known as visual communication technology and to create something that reinforces the uniqueness of the city. And that's fundamentally at its core what this is about. And I could try and do my best to explain it to you, and the legislation in front of you does an okay job, is just being descriptive, but I think you need to see what the potential is to understand it. And what I'd like to start with here is about a three-minute video that'll give you a good sense of it, and then we'll go from there. Thank you again for your time.
Philadelphia, one of the largest cities in the country. A world-class, historic, cultural, and economic center. What defines this city is the vibrant communities and neighborhoods, each and every one of them that create the place we know as Philadelphia. It is these many communities that make this city what it is. The sense of place that those communities create is not limited to residential areas, but also shapes our commercial centers. The opportunity has come to reinforce those advantages that until now were psychologically impossible. It is the convergence of art, architecture, and advertising to create the earth's spiritual display, a visual and audio communication platform that looks like this art. South Broad, home to many of the city's nationally recognized musical and performing arts venues. Creating a tribute to the musical arts is a staff of music, completely in three-dimensional levels. The design of a UED is its most important attribute. Each UED would be subject to civic design review. Planning Commission and Art Commission, virtual, ensuring that each UED--
There's too much with the telepathy, Peter.
--is a growing commercial portfolio. From liberal to abstract, the design must be thoroughly extensive. Philadelphia City Hall is the epicenter of the city's cultural movement. UEDs will be limited to the urban floor, as the Indian era outlined in red, and subject to highest civic legislation. In their initial implementation, UEDs will inhabit areas that surround the hall, such as the writing terminal market, the Philadelphia Convention Center, and the Avenue of the Arts. The Philadelphia Convention Center places host some of the city's largest and most prominent events, becoming a top destination for many of the city's visitors. While the UBS, each of the local manufacturers, stands the next travel version of the convention center's logo, but digital offices, and numbers within a wide range. Technology has art. These displays will be the most advanced in North America, and arguably, the world. This is a place that feels far beyond aesthetics, and extends to how many UEDs function, showing these more than advertising. Communities will be content rich. Typically, the total floor's height is 97% of the advertising, and 3% of all the stars' announcements and emergency messages. UEDs are separate, unshaven by the true communication time bar. 8% show these global nonprofits that inhabit communities where specific UEDs locate. 8% of the design is dedicated to states that communicate relevant and close people who live or visit Philadelphia. 11% show these relevant and original news, whether in entertainment. 3% include public stars' announcements and emergency messages. 70% display advertising for leading regional and national companies. More digital advertising, UEDs will display local advertising hours and international information every day. The corner of the park street, located between the main writing terminal market and the state's convention center. This park was to be welcomed by visitors from all over the world. Celebrated with a local diversity that is still at play, stands for World's largest entertainment club. Artistically designed, it's one of the most overrated and great, while its beautiful shape ensures its ability to accommodate many families. In addition to the aesthetic communication company, UEDs offer a different financial with it to nonprofit organizations located in each of the UED's districts. Each UED will allocate $10 million to the nonprofit located in the vicinity of that UED. The three initial UEDs will encompass the Avenue of the Arts, the Writing Terminal Market, Prime City of the Art, and the Avenue of the Arts. The earth's spiritual display is a communication platform that's technically designed to enhance the urban landscape. Lots of showing us a relaxed source for original news, whether safe or illegal information, and emergency messages that benefit both residents and the visitor's life. The convergence of art, architecture, and advertising, reinforcing the identity of the city and its citizens.
By the way, gentlemen, were you trying to score points with us by having the council president demonstrated on that? I mean, you know, or is that just a coincidence? Okay.
It just demonstrates how extensively involved the council president was in this process.
Okay.
Have the next slide, please. That's the overview. Let's get down to the details. Looking at it from six perspectives, the purpose, why UEDs, why now, why Philadelphia? The history of the detailed three-year process that we've undertaken to get to the legislation that's in front of you today. A visual summary of the legislation, so you can see when implemented, how it affects the urban center. The design and approval process, if council decided to move forward, all the steps that would need to happen before a building permit could be issued. The issue of brightness, as was discussed earlier, or more technically speaking, luminance and illuminance, and the nonprofit component. The purpose. This is about five things when you sum it up. It's about creating a multifaceted communication platform that's able to add vibrancy in unique commercial quarters. It's about reinforcing the sense of place that is areas like the Avenue of the Arts or the Convention Center. It's about being proactive and not reactive. Visual communication technology is here. The opportunity exists to regulate that technology in a way that ensures that its implementation is of the highest level. It's about creating exposure for nonprofits in the city of Philadelphia. There's over 560 nonprofits in this city, and the ability to create meaningful exposure for them is tremendous. Three years of detailed planning and transparent development. There's been over 70 meetings and presentations with more than 50 stakeholders. There's been 50 different UED concepts that have been put forth. There's been over 20 locations that have been contemplated for this implementation. The legislation itself. The UED boundary line is denoted here in blue. Before a location can be approved, city council would have to issue a companion piece of legislation for a specific site. The three initial sites that were proposing are at the corner of Broad and Race at the Convention Center, the Globe at 12th and Arch, and the Notes concept on the Bellevue Garage. One of the key provisions of the legislation is that no UED can be constructed within 900 feet of another UED, as outlined here by the yellow circles. The areas in red, based upon the three initial locations being approved, would leave those areas in red unable to have any additional UEDs. The next provision in the legislation requires a 500-foot spacing from passive parks and open space districts, some of which are identified in green, and 500-foot spacing from residentially zoned districts. When you layer those into the equation, with the three initial locations that have been proposed, you end up with an area here that's not colored in red that could support additional UEDs under the construct of the current legislation. Now, depending on the placement of those other two, in those areas, you could support either one or two other UEDs. The design and the approval process. Let's talk about the design for a second. The legislation requires a minimum of three local artists, designers, or architects to design each UED. Additionally, there's a minimum of $2 million that has to go into the physical construction of a UED, not engineering costs, not design costs, not soft costs, into the physical structure itself. There's a requirement for three different types of visual communication technology to be included in the implementation. The reason behind this is what's trying to be created here is a pedestrian viewer experience, not just a simple, single form of technology. The last part is, in order to create these forms, it requires a custom implementation of technology. This is a typical LED module. This is what most of the technology that you see in this city looks like. It's square in shape. You can see the exposed LEDs. You can see that there's significant spacing between those LEDs. And when you have a tile like this, you are limited to flat, square, and rectangular shapes. If you're going to create three-dimensional objects, a couple of things need to change. That globe concept, that's eight different shapes of modules that vary from traditional shapes like this to curved shapes, to triangular shapes, to make sure you have a continuous surface area. The other thing you'll notice about this type of technology is it's surface-mounted diodes. You can't see the individual red, green, and blue diodes because they're all behind each one of these. The resolution of this is 225% on average higher than what you see in a conventional digital display. The approval process. If council decides to move forward with the legislation as contemplated, there is a long road ahead between then and a construction permit. That road includes civic design review, then planning board approval, then Philadelphia Art Commission approval, and then lastly, PennDOT approval on top of that. The purpose of these two implementations, and the reality is, is that the concepts that we've showed here today are nothing more than concepts. If it was to move forward, the final implementations would look much differently than the concepts because of the input of all these parties involved in it. So, whether you think on the Avenue of the Arts should be some literal implementation like the notes, or something more abstract like a sound wave, or something in between, this process is designed that whatever gets built at the end of the day, everybody's had a voice in the process. Ah, the issue of brightness. How bright's too bright? Technically, we're talking about two things, luminance and illuminance. Luminance is the measure of how much light is produced from a surface. As Councilman Squilla had suggested earlier, it's measured in nits. You measure nits with a luminance meter, otherwise known as a nit gun. This one on my hand's a $4,000 device. It has its limitations. Those limitations include that you have to be perfectly perpendicular from the display that you want to measure the nits from in order for it to be accurate. It's kind of difficult when you've got a display that's elevated unless you're going to bring a crane out. Second thing, nits cannot be correlated back to ambient light level. Now, the legislation includes a requirement for a cap of 500 nits at night and 7,500 nits during the day. If you just stopped there with your lighting regulations, you could have a situation where a display is operating at 5,000 nits, well below the 7,500 cap, during a cloudy or overcast day, and it would still be too bright because it doesn't correlate back to ambient light level. Illuminance, on the other hand, is how much light illuminates a particular surface, or as was suggested earlier, it's what the eye perceives as brightness. It's measured in foot candles. It can be measured with a device like this. It's a light meter. It's a $200 device. You can buy them for as little as $100. You can measure with this at almost any angle without being perfectly perpendicular. The best part about using this form of measurement is that it can be in line with ambient light level. So, there are two schools of thought on how to measure it, and I'm not here to tell you which one is better, okay? But I am here to tell you that the legislation in front of you includes both of them. And so, with the two of them combined, then you're addressing the perspective of lighting from two different sides, and you've also had a way in order to effectively regulate it. Takes a lot of things for nonprofits to be successful, but there's two key things I think most people would agree with, and that is, they need exposure and they need capital. And if you have exposure, you usually can get capital, and if you've got capital, you can buy exposure. So, over 560 of them in the city of Philadelphia, by our research, and I bet you if you asked-- So over 560 of them in the city of Philadelphia, by our research, and I bet you if you asked a citizen of Philadelphia to name however many nonprofits they can, they'd probably come up with about five. The UED platform is designed to address that. Over 10 hours a week on each UED, within even distribution, not at 12:00 midnight, not at 6:00 in the morning, but evenly distributed with the rest of the formatting of a UED, has to be dedicated to nonprofit communication. The developer of that UED has an obligation to provide the nonprofit with the creative, so it's a zero cost for the nonprofit. We're talking about a level of transformative exposure for these nonprofits. The second part of this piece is capital. And the capital piece is that UEDs are about financially empowering nonprofits to maintain and revitalize the built environment where they are located. According to Nonprofit Finance Fund, in 2014, 47% of nonprofits reported a decline in both state and federal funding. It's no surprise, we all see it. Each UED will provide $5.2 million to a nonprofit over the life of the UED. Those initial nonprofits: the Avenue of the Arts for the Notes Concept on the Bellevue, the Reading Terminal Market at 12th and Arch, and a split benefactor for the Convention Center between Friends of the Rail Park and Avenue North Renaissance. Next slide. Let's talk about what that money means. The legislation as drafted requires $125,000 from each UED to go to a nonprofit in the base year. It then has 4% escalators per year. So if somebody was going to develop a UED five years from now in 2020, their base year would be $146,000. What's this money mean? How meaningful is it? That $125,000, that's approximately just more than a third of the budget of the Avenue of the Arts. That's $125,000 that can go to maintaining the beautiful ornamental streetlights that are there, the pavers that form the crosswalks that are unique to the Avenue of the Arts, or the flowerbeds that line the Avenue of the Arts. It's real dollars, meaningful amounts relative to nonprofits, and it's recurring. Give me the next slide. You know, when you take a look at what this is about, up until a half a decade ago, signs or displays were defined by the information they disseminated. You had on-premise signs, off-premise signs, government signs, political signs. It's time to transform the thinking of not governing signs or regulating them based upon a century-old model of what signs disseminate, but rather looking at the fact that this communication that exists today is able to create a communication platform that can disseminate all different types of communication. And here we are in a city that's got a long history of firsts, and the opportunity is to take the well-fought-out, well-planned legislation that's in front of you, that has been through an exhaustive review from a lot of different bodies and stakeholders, and to create something that's world-class. But more importantly than creating something that's world-class, creating something that's uniquely Philadelphia. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. If I could just ask one question, I'm not sure you said this directly. What was, and I'm sure it was with consultation with the council members, but deciding on those three locations, what went into specifically those locations?
Sure. There was a lot of factors that went into the determination of the three initial locations. The first is, if you look at the three sites that we've picked...